All right, everybody. It is 6:30. It is time to call the regular common council meeting for October 7th, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call roll?
Counselor LeDine.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Vice President Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Vice President Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Johnson is excused and President Grasky.
Here. Over here, actually. Okay. Moving on to item four, approve the minutes from September 16th, 2025. Do we have a motion? I will go with motion by Elm, second by Herrick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Are we going on to number five? Okay. Okay, excuse me. Number five is no action. Number six, mayor's report. Item 6.1, mayor, before the budget report that you have first. Do you have any other items you'd like to report on?
I do. Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to announce to the council that just today I found out that Captain John Prendergast of our fire department was nominated for first responder, nominated and awarded first responder of the year for the 73rd Assembly District, and he'll be recognized along with 98 other first responders throughout Wisconsin. So he is our rep of the north. So congratulations to Captain Prendergast. I hope to join him there.
Thank you, Mayor. And if anyone has no objection, we're going to have Mayor Payne now present us with his budget for 2026.
Thank you again, Madam President. Good evening, councilors. This is one of my favorite meetings of the year. I just gave a number of, I feel like I'm especially ready for this intro. I just gave a number of interviews to the press. And the way I describe this, the budget is the largest policy we will pass throughout the entire year. The actual construction and completion of this from its first imaginings until final adoption and the publication of the final budget book takes up to six months or longer. So as you all know, I'll get into that process a bit more. But just a few quick notes as I begin this. The documents you have in front of you, both the digital ones and these paper ones, particularly this budget book, you'll see this is listed and described as a draft. That is because tonight, while it's a proposal, while it's final from my office, the policies are final. There are many things in that book that could still be changed, improved, updated. So as you are reading through that book, one, obviously, if you see something glaringly missing, we know about that and that will be added before the end of the year. But if there are mistakes, particularly on things that you control, your committees, your own personal biographies, please let us know that. If for some reason some document doesn't match the official documents that we're going to be dealing with, let us know. But that is the final product that we will deal with tonight. Okay. So then I am honored to present the 2026 budget. The first thing I would note is this was always described as the general fund budget presentation. I've stopped describing it that way a few years ago because I present as many budgets as possible to you tonight, as I will describe here in a minute. So tonight, we'll have the general fund, of course. That is my legal obligation to you. It is the first Tuesday in October. The capital improvement plan, which you're used to seeing tonight, our capital expenditures for the next five years. Several grant funds, the revolving grant funds are relatively new just a few years ago, but the proposals are complete. The economic development fund, because this was a significant part of council priorities, I wanted to show you this completed fund budget, including its cash flows. The legal liability fund also showed up on the priorities, so we might as well talk about it. And the historic properties fund, which is of all of these, the most incomplete budget I'm presenting to you. And I'll speak about it more at the time, but I felt that was important since we so recently talked about that and so recently acquired the museum. So I made sure to include that tonight. What is coming in the next few weeks, and you will likely see these at committee before you see them at council. Our enterprise funds, particularly our utilities, the stormwater and wastewater and landfill fund will all appear at the Public Works Committee. Landfill may go to the Finance Committee. They're fairly used to talking about that. Those, we have a lot of work left to do, but I do expect those there before it snows. And the other evolving funds, many of these will not go to committee. They are relatively standard funds. They still must be adopted by council, but they, some will roll through committee, I apologize. But this is just an example of what you're looking at. IT, health insurance fund, workers' comp, the kind of stuff that's pretty heavily influenced by our finance department. You'll see them. You'll be able to ask about them, but they don't take a lot of policy work. Okay, the process and how we got here. I always want to remind folks of this so they know what exactly we have to do in the fall. So as you will remember, the dreaming process of the budget, the brainstorming begins in the late spring, early summer, where the staff and the council submit their priorities. This is where I take all restraints off. If money were no object, what would you do? What do you care about? The, and then we spend a couple of hard months in the early to midsummer, paring down our expense budgets. This is always the toughest, tense meetings in my office with department heads, where we're reducing expenses to the absolute lowest they can possibly be, and often removing things, even when we would rather keep them in. This is to make the budget as strong as it can be when our revenue numbers start rolling in in the early fall. Some of the councilors that have been here while will remember, this meeting used to be the first Tuesday in September, not October. The reason we pushed it back is because throughout September, those real revenue numbers are coming in and projections start becoming reality. And so I can present you a budget that's more fixed and firm and tells the truth about where we're going. Then we reach this meeting, which begins your process. As I will say later, I will not recommend you adopt this tonight. You could. It's done. My work is done. You could pass all of these budgets I put in front of you. It's fairly agendized. But I think obviously you got these a couple of hours ago. I would suggest you take at least the next two weeks and read them, review them. Maybe look for mistakes. It's possible we have made outright mistakes in this. This is a lot of documentation over and months of work. Let us know if something's missing. If you want to change something, that's what we can start talking about over the next couple of weeks. As we get into November, we will start later in October, and then early November, we'll have a real discussions on what this should look like and then move towards final adoption. A couple of changes I wanted to call out right now that I hope to make to this process in the future. Several of you have come to me with frustration about the priorities process, namely, you're asked to compare some very small dollar items to some very large dollar items. And so that will get downright comical here at some point. But you may all care very deeply about something that could cost $10,000. But how do you stack that up against, you know, millions and millions of dollars in street maintenance and repairs? So I'll hope to improve that in the future, but for now, the priorities were a pretty good guide. That's it for that one. Okay, speaking of priorities, this is basically how it shook out from the council. You had a lot of consistency among you. There were a few outliers, but on the whole, these are the things that council valued in the general fund. Improving the economic development fund, firefighter, mental health, increased bus service did very well with several councilors ranking it their number one priority. Social media and marketing manager position was the highest ranking new staff position. Part-time community police officers, second highest after that. Some strange loyalty to the legal liability fund, but I look forward to telling you why I strongly support that. And the downtown design manual, which is another example of, that just doesn't cost very much money compared to, say, a new staff position, but it did very well among the council. Here's just a look of what that looks like. You can see the priorities of the council become fairly clear. You got, you don't have to read that. That is in all of your books. You'll have access to all of this, including your individual priorities. I just wanted to show you that depending where you draw the line, it's pretty clear what the council's priorities are. You just pick a line and the council, so for example, you see economic development fund just runs away with it. So does firefighter, mental health. In terms of capital, and you'll see in a second, emergency vehicle pre- I think just about every single counselor supported that. And lead line replacement also very popular. Fire station two had broad support. Connect Superior, majority of the council supporting it, became one of the highest infrastructure proposals. The records management and archives, another not super expensive thing, but popular. Streets improvement improvements is always probably the most popular amongst infrastructure, but I think Connect Superior actually edged it out this year. And the golf course irrigation was clearly supported by the council. Again, you pick a place to draw the line and say we're going to fund everything above it is, it's not how we do it, but you could do it that way. But generally, that is what, how we have funded this budget by just every, started at the top thing. I know I had to fund that EVP and I keep going down the list, funding as much as I can. Okay, this is the moment everybody's been waiting for, Christmas morning. What's actually in the budget? General Fund has a 2.8% non-union wage increase. That should be a surprise to nobody. That is on the agenda for later tonight. This year, that was different. It was recommended by the Human Resource Committee. Why that's different? It's actually council policy. The mayor has no authority to set this. The, however, in the past, I've just chosen a number that works well for the budget that I thought was fair compared to other cities and then asked you to accept it because it was what was in the budget. That's a backwards process. The Human Resource Committee worked with me throughout the entire year to determine what that number should be. And then they put a pretty tough meeting in at their last meeting and made a recommendation. That recommendation is 2.8%. And so I support it and it is in the budget. Firefighter, mental health, easy to fund. We're investing in the long-term health of our firefighters, neck-up checkups. It's only about $20,000, but I think that that reaps dividends. Want to linger here, the police part-time community service officers. I told the police chief and the command staff that they would find out today if it's in there. It is. I don't think that's a surprise, but the, this is a part-time internship program wherein we will hire people that won't be sworn police officers and then they won't have a badge, they won't have a gun, but they will do community service officer work. They will be members of the department. They will be in uniform. They will do a number of community-oriented tasks. And I don't want to give you a list of examples. This will all be discussed in Human Resource Committee later. But what it does is it allows people to enter our department without having the full qualifications of officers. They get some on-the-ground training. They get to learn about our culture. We get to learn about their character. And we build a pipeline of higher-quality officers that we've had our hands on from the very beginning of their career. They might still be in college or younger when they join our department part-time. There's also a financial advantage to this. I funded this to the tune of $50,000, councilors. This is a little bit involved, but when we got the shared revenue increases from the state a year ago, it came with a serious requirement called maintenance of effort for our police and fire departments. You basically have to maintain spending levels. It's a complex formula that you determine it, but you check some boxes, but you have to maintain spending levels. When you aren't fully staffed, you risk falling below the previous year's spending levels, and it might be a pretty serious penalty to our shared revenue. Adding part-time officers, where we control the number of hours they work, how many we have, gives us a certain amount of flexibility where we can raise our police spending if we need to, to help augment a hole in our spending from an understaffed department. That is not the point of it. The point is to bring high-quality support into our police department and expand our mission. But it does have that side advantage that I hold, and which is why I funded it to the max. Okay, tourism coordinator was the highest ranked. I did not fully fund this through several discussions with the council president, who's also chair of the Tourism Commission. We felt a partnership between us and the Tourism Commission would work best. This is what we do with the Douglas County Receptionist Position on the third floor, which I believe is also on your agenda tonight. We, what I funded is the benefits package, the same as we would any other staff person in the city. If the Tourism Commission would like to work with, would like to do this, we would ask them to cover the salary, so we would split the cost. Now, this is where I pause and point out, in both of these cases, we are not creating new positions tonight. We are not creating new police officer positions. We are not creating a tourism coordinator or any, at any point in this budget. We are funding those positions. You could pass this budget, fully fund these positions. It doesn't mean those positions exist. The Human Resource Committee creates them. The council approves them. So there will still be an entire process that determines exactly what these people do. Should we even hire them? But these were reflected as priorities of the council, so I wanted to put you in a position. If at some point in 2026, you would like to adopt the police chief's proposal for community service officers or the council president's proposal for a tourism coordinator, you'll have the money to do it. Again, you don't have to do it, but you can afford to now. Okay, the, of the priorities, the lowest-ranked thing was the employee milestone swag. Funded it anyways because it was my favorite thing. The, and I get some say in this. This is a proposal by our Human Resource Director that as employees reach these like 10, 15, 20, 25-year milestones, and there are more than you think there are, we, employees save very long time at the City of Superior. It's something I'm incredibly proud of. I think a lot of the staff around here are very proud of our retention rate and how much of their lives people give to this community. And I want to make sure we recognize that with something that is, that's more than a pin, more than a hat, more than a letter from the mayor. I hope they appreciate the letter from the mayor, but I'd like to do something a bit more substantial for them. So I threw a couple thousand dollars at this and I hope you'll keep it in. And then, of course, what's likely to lead the news is this does have a levy decrease. The number seems small, 1.55%. Our budget tracking on our current documents goes back to about 2009. This is the largest decrease in that time. It's about a $200,000 decrease in the overall levy. I will explain exactly what that means in the final slide, but it's somewhat significant, and I am fairly certain that that, this will make us the only municipality in the Twin Ports that is actually decreasing the levy. Douglas County is recommending a basically flat, just, but it is still a very slight increase. Ours is going down. It's gone down before. What, we'll talk more later, but this may or may not have a significant impact on tax bills, so we have to tell the truth about that. The reason for the levy increase, because I know you're going to ask me, is debt service falling off? We have paid down a lot of debt. That is a plan we made several years ago. It is coming to fruition. And when we don't have debt service to pay, the levy that funds that decreases. That was a policy decision that we made together several years ago to remove debt from our CIP, and it's really paying off. Now, that was never meant to be permanent. I will be proposing new debt tonight, as you know. But for now, that is really paid off. So I do believe there are a number of mechanisms that will allow us to keep decreasing the levy, depending on the choices we make, but your work in the past few years has paid off. Okay. Don't worry about this, the general fund. I just want to make sure you know you're looking at the right page. The next two show it. I had to cut this in half to give you any hope of seeing it. This is the big sheet. There's always a top one. We call this the master, general fund master in your digital documents. This shows the amount spent in each department, and I'm going to come back to this at the end. I just wanted to say the general fund is funded. The, you'll see at the bottom, I'm sorry, this up top, you see our revenues at the bottom, our expenditures, and then any surplus or contingency or deficit that we project now and in the coming years. Dark blue column is 2026. That is the only thing up for approval this fall. We don't have any authority to approve anything going into the future. Okay, CIP, the one that is even more fun than the general funds. We had a slight growth in the terminal taxes, about $250,000. That does impact our projections going forward in a positive way, but I felt very strongly we should look at how the terminal tax has actually been growing, which is modestly. So I imposed a modest growth, a little bit below what has actually happened over the last few years. But hey, it's more money and it was helpful. I put both the fire hall and golf course irrigation in there. They were both, as you saw, very highly ranked. Both of these, I proposed bonding. The fire hall, I know that's no surprise. We've been talking about bonding for that for quite a while. The reason, the fire hall costs $10 million. And years ago, when we started taking bonding out of the CIP, I warned you at this presentation, it's going to come back someday because there are projects so large that there's no amount of moving money around in the CIP that can pay for it. Fire Hall is an example of that. There's almost nothing we could do that would give us access to $10 million. That wouldn't be really catastrophic for the rest of the budget. Some things you have to bond for. Golf course irrigation, we don't have to bond for that at all. However, we were very, very close to the golf course being able to pay for its own irrigation system via a revenue bond. However, meaning they could use their own revenues to pay back the bond and it wouldn't touch the city's general fund at all. The problem is, it was close, but not quite. We don't believe that it can actually support the bond payments and therefore we wouldn't get a revenue bond for it. So I'm going to propose general obligation bonds. And this policy will come later. It will involve the golf course committee and the finance committee. But we will propose that the golf course use its own revenue to pay back a good deal of this bond, maybe all of it. But I think at least about 75 cents on the dollar. That is policy for the future. Right now, what I am proposing is bonding for and funding a golf course irrigation system, mostly because I was convinced that that issue is timely and you all expressed a strong support for funding this. Preemption system should be no surprise. It was easily your favorite thing. I put it in 2027. That will give us time to plan out the process, buy the materials and do all of the work. That money can come forward if it needs to, but there are a couple of things you will see get pushed out into coming years. I started to get a little bit concerned about cash flow in the CIP, namely, it's a five-year document. We can move that money from year to year, but at some point, we only have so much money on hand right now, today, and we need to be able to pay contractors. So I spread some of our obligations out a little bit, but 2027, I felt we'd spend the better part of 2026 working on it, planning it anyways, so we can actually do installation then. Again, if something happens, a grant, something like that, which we may get that pushes up, then it pushes it up and the money will be there. There, I did fund lead lines. I'll show you that in a minute, exactly how much. That creates a lead lines bunt that we can draw from for really any purpose related to lead lines. Obviously, you have heard about the program that we're working on with Superior Waterlight Power. That is the first point of this. But if there are any other opportunities to work on lead lines funding, the fund can be used for any of them. Connect Superior, put more money in that. I'll show you the actual numbers here in a minute. And the undefined funding, there are two items in here. The clerk archiving for about $30,000 and bus service for $250,000. Namely, I didn't have a hard thing to purchase. I didn't know exactly how much it costs, but one, these things were highly ranked. Two, I think we'll have an opportunity to move on them very quickly, so I set aside funding and you'll see it in the CIP. In the case of clerk archiving, it's like 30K. It just means, again, our clerk bunt doesn't just have a $30,000 credit card to go out and buy this stuff. She will make a proposal and we will evaluate it. There'll be bidding and then you will have a $30,000 budget for it. Bus service, an expansion of the DTA was one of the highest ranked priorities of the council. Two counselors ranked at number one. No surprises, counselors Herrick and LeDine ranked at number one because their districts lost bus service. I assume that's why they ranked it so highly. They've both been working on this quite a bit. And I've had some very interesting and productive conversations with the DTA recently that we have a lot of opportunities to actually expand bus service. I firmly believe that we can expand it, possibly restoring service to areas that have lost it. I'm sorry, probably even restoring service to areas that have lost it. I don't have those final plans for you tonight. I know it will cost money. I don't know how much, and I don't know when we can actually do it. There are also some other policies that I think you should consider, like potentially waiving bus fares or reducing them, changing routes in other areas or other ways, increasing their frequency. What I wanted to do, again, you're hearing a theme here, I wanted to give you the cash to be able to have those conversations and execute a deal right away. If the head of the DTA comes and says, I can make this change for an extra $150,000 a year, I want you to be able to say yes immediately, if that helps, if that helps our city or your neighborhoods. Okay, the document itself, the revenue, I'm going to have to follow along with you. The, most of the highlights matter for tonight. Others are just things that we changed along the way and wanted to remember, so they might mean nothing. You will see, most of you should remember this document. It is a five-year document. It goes through 2031 so that we can plan projects. It's become fairly consistent over the last few years. As you can see, our revenue is healthy, but we didn't go crazy in projecting high amounts to the CIP. You see what we are transferring over to the general fund. One of the slides I left off here, I asked you all which you valued most. Funding operations, funding capital, moving revenue to operations, moving revenue to capital, or lowering the levy. From what I remember, funding, lowering the levy and funding operations ranked the highest. And so most counselors supported that. And to do that means more money going towards the general fund. So I reversed a policy that I had been doing just a few years ago, which was to reduce the amount of terminal tax going to the general fund. That said, for years, I've always believed this to be a stable source of funding. It has proven to be a stable and growing source of funding. And I may propose some other changes to the structure this next year that reflect that a little bit more. But for now, a reasonable growth in that amount, as long as the amount keeps growing, strikes me as responsible policy, as long as we account for it in all of the budgets, so we're not taking unnecessary risks. You see the bonding added in there, 10 million for the fire station, 4 million for the golf course, which might be a little bit high. Anything else in revenue? No. Expenses, make sure I didn't miss any notes. Oh, yeah, I just wanted you to know, the revolving grant fund, that doesn't appear in other, that only gets funded when we've got some extra cash. That we're doing pretty, we're doing very well right now, so I wanted to make sure that was funded. That will include the small business grant program, the parks, the recreation grant program, the public art fund, and more money for nonprofit grants. Again, committees have to decide how it's spent. You are deciding whether they have cash. And then, before I forget, I'm grateful to remember, we have surplus from last year. That also shows up. That is not highlighted. You can see that on the document. It shows up right under transfers for, transfers from other funds. The surplus here, I moved over 1.5 million. The surplus from the previous year is our 2024 closed books. We received 1.7, just under 1.7 million more in revenue than we spent. That is our surplus. We have a $1.7 million surplus. The reserve was already fully funded, so I just rounded the number and to make sure reserves stay nice and healthy, I threw a 150,000, 170,000, something like that, in the reserve just to keep it padded and healthy. But the remainder of the reserve, rather than dedicated to any one purpose, I put it in the CIP and it's spread across all the projects. You can name whatever you want, but it's in revenue. Okay. The essential expenses, a couple of things I wanted to point out. First, the parks funding looks funny. You got like a million dollars this year, and then it looks like a cut in future years to 313,000 from last year. That's not true. It's stable funding. This is just a more transparent way of accounting for what we actually did. The council agreed to move up a lot of funding from future years to fund the skate park right now. So that's what that's showing, is we're going to pay most of those bills here in the upcoming year, and they borrowed from those future years. There's a full plan that comes out of the Parks and Rec Commission that shows what we plan to build in each year. None of this changes that, except the Parks Commission just got another year. So they, you can throw another year, a few more plans, change things around if you like. The other, one and a half million for Connect Superior, but it's spread over a few years. You can see that under technology down here, right? The, yes. It's spread over several years. Notably, it's only a quarter million in 2026, and that's because, because Connect Superior capital costs have been coming in under budget, we actually have quite a bit of money left over in that fund. And so we've got money ready to go to do a build-out in 2026. So I threw just a little extra to make sure that we could do the build-out we want. We can talk, Connect Superior is on the agenda later tonight. We can talk a little bit more about it, but obviously, this was highly prioritized by the council. And it, we're into, we're well into the build-out now. We have customers. At this point, every expectation we have has been exceeded. We are gaining customers faster than we projected. The costs for construction are coming in lower than expected. It's financially doing very well. It is clearly popular. And so I believe it's in the city's interest to keep moving forward. That is a revenue producer long-term. If it maintains this pace or anything close to it, this could be bringing money back to the general fund in coming years, but we got to reach customers. Okay, the discretionary expenses is where you will find the lead lines funding. $100,000 next year, $400,000 the year after that. And I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but it's, we don't really have expected expenses yet, and I'm not sure when we'll get them. Right now, we have no, we have no bills, no plans to spend money officially. The area that was targeted for the first lead line replacement program with Superior Waterlight and Power is eligible for 100% loan forgiveness under the new, under the grant program. So theoretically, we don't have any expenses at all in 2026. However, I want to make sure that our team is in position if any opportunities arrive, any unexpected challenges, if we can help somebody just outside the area. If there's another construction project that exposes a lead line, I want to make sure that we've just got some funds they can work with. If they need to be doing, solving design problems, hiring some consultants, I just want to establish a fund in 2026. We'll start pumping real cash in 2027, at which point that's, by the time we get to 2028, we'll have a sense of what this really costs. And I would hope we would have a little bit more revenue, but we'll just see how that plays out. Anything else exciting in here? No. There's a very small contingency. What is that, $13,000? Yeah, a little over $13,000. That's yours to spend if you want. If you can think of something to spend $13,000 on, I don't recommend. Yeah, they're a little over 13,000. That's yours to spend if you want. If you can think of something to spend 13,000 on, I don't recommend it. That's 13,000 over five years and it's already a fairly conservative budget. So I have no objections if you want to pump it into something. I do not recommend moving it to the general fund unless you want to spend like $1,000 a year. It's a small amount of money, so I just thought a contingency is healthy and I like, as you can see, round numbers. So I just left it there. Okay, getting there, I promise. A couple of other things. The Economic Development Fund, as you saw, was one of the most highly rated things in the priorities. So I wanted to show that to you for two reasons. One, it's ready to go. It's ready for adoption, but I have two slides to show you. First, the expense budget. You also saw that the downtown design manual was very highly rated. That, I don't know the full cost of that, but it's less than $100,000 almost certainly. So I beefed up, you'll find the professional services somewhere in the middle there. And the, and this is all in the digital documents I sent you earlier too. And if anybody else needs those, I can send them along. So professional services and contracted services you'll see are much higher than their actual spending in previous years because I expanded those pretty aggressively. One, because often when we're doing economic development, we tend, that's what we go to. So it's nice to have that available, but also either of those would cover that design manual. So while you will never see the words downtown design manual in this budget, it is funded via the Economic Development Fund. I've also left in about $200,000 in incentives. We planned to spend that last year. We did not spend it. So I rolled it over to this year to make sure that if there's ever a big project that's not in a TID where we can help a major business come to Superior Grow, want to be able to fund that. And the cash flow, I didn't increase funding to the Economic Development Fund and this is why. You probably can't see this, maybe you can see a little bit on the screen here. This is our history and how much we've typically had in a cash balance. How much is sitting in the bank account of the Economic Development Fund? Obviously, you see it's likely to take a spike by the end of this year because we're not spending that incentive that we expected to spend. That's moved to the next year where we will spend it, or well, I hope we will spend it. But the projected cash flow balance at the end of '26 is consistent with where it's been for years. It's not even really a drawdown counselors. It's a very healthy fund and is likely to stay that way into the near future. We could spend, if you came up with other ideas that are in this budget now, we could spend some real cash out of that. I mean, leave some there, but. Okay, the Historic Properties Fund, this is less a work of fiction than it was the last time I showed it to you, but it's still a long ways from perfect. As I explained during the process of acquisition of the museums, we have to really get our feet under us and operate these museums for a little while to understand how much money they make and how much they cost. I just wanted to show you the expense fund so that you can approve it, you can authorize them to spend this money. It's high. It's higher than I expected it to be because we went super conservative in this spending. I really don't expect them to spend all of this money. I just want them in position to be able to spend it if they need to. The, I also expect, so it does contain a fairly large transfer from the general fund down here. A big part of that is money that has always been going to the museums. Another part of it is money that previously had been earmarked for the animal shelter that you'll see the finance committee does not recommend transfer the animal shelter. It's probably much better used here. The other reason, if they don't spend all this money, and more importantly, if their revenue is much higher than we're budgeting it to be, that seeds a fund. It seeds a museum fund so we can get that healthy in coming years. We're gonna have to make sure that that's strong. Then we'll taper it down. We're not gonna pour cash on them forever. We do expect their fundraising, as in we are expecting those staff to do fundraising and grant applications to support most of their own operations. So that will, I'm just hopeful that both of those show up better. They're very conservative, revenue and expenses. I didn't leave revenue in here because that one is a work of fiction. Okay, Legal Liability Fund, a couple of people voted for this and I was so pleased. This is one of my favorite creations in the budget. This is something, several years ago, we just kept a certain amount of money in the city attorney's budget in case there was a lawsuit, you know, and, but the problem was you never knew whether there was gonna be a lawsuit in any given year and you didn't know how much it was gonna cost if you did have one. Well, we've always had this liability fund that covers a number of things, namely the liability insurance. But we started moving money over that had been a very, very variable amount in the city attorney's budget and we made a set annual contribution to this. And it's, there's money that comes from every budget that goes into it, to start beefing up the cash balance of this. And the idea being, if something ever happens where you think you're acting with prudence, with good public policy and you're making the right decision for the community, but somebody says, you will do this or I'm gonna sue you, and I don't want you to ever be in a position to make a decision under duress like that. I don't want you to say, well, I'm afraid of a lawsuit, so we better just do what he says. No, I want you doing sound public policy and I want us to be able to protect you while you do it. That is what this fund does. If anybody sues us, at the very least, you can say, we can hire a good lawyer because look at the health of this fund. This is the reason I didn't increase it this year. In fact, it could arguably be drawn down. If, this doesn't just fund the city attorney. This funds, if we need any kind of outside consultants, if we need outside, outside attorneys, experts in any given field, counselors are closing on a million dollars in this. Just a few years ago, we were barely over 100,000 and projected a deficit by 2022. So this is doing very well. You're in a very strong position. You never have to be afraid of anybody, is what I'm saying. But we will probably look to draw that down in coming years, hopefully by not getting sued. The library fund is also a transfer from the general fund. And the reason that I included this is because the amount that I'm transferring to the library is not going up. It's static. That's going to make the library board stressed out, but I did meet with their finance committee chair and the library director to go over this budget. And the finance committee would be very used to looking at something like this. But I just wanted some reassurance for you and for the public that we're not defunding or holding the library fund flat in any way. Wanted to show you the long-term cash balance projections. Here we are in 2026. They've got a nice, they're drawing that down quite a bit through their parking lot project. That'll come down to a very low number and then you see it start to creep back up and then start growing aggressively. All of that is because they owe the city from the original library remodel a couple of years ago. They've been paying that back. We loaned money to them. Well, that debt obligation falls off in 2029 and then the amount we're transferring to them is more than enough to pay their expenses, including with some cost increases, and start building a pretty healthy cash balance. So long-term, library fund can pay its bills and it will have some nice growing reserves into the future. That's, that's why I did not increase that. Okay, we're getting close to the end here, but I wanted to show you the most important innovation I think we have tonight, just in terms of our process. Last year, I promised, if you, if you look at the big sheet again, the, this big blue and white sheet, you will see that it projects five years into the future. Last year and almost every year before it, those projections, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, it would show growing deficits for the city. Last year, somebody asked me about that. It might have been Counselor Fantasy asked me about that. And I responded like, don't worry about that. Those are just arbitrary. Most of the numbers are made up there. And which begged the question, well, why are we putting it on our sheet and releasing it to the public? It ought to be a useful tool. So what I committed to you last year was it should be a useful tool. It should be grounded in fact. It should be real projections and it should be our actual plan that demonstrates the city's actual fiscal health. So we can show that we're not making irresponsible decisions today so that we're not borrowing from the future just to get through a couple of long meetings in October and November. So here's the numbers that we use to inform it. There were many numbers we used, but these are the simplest to follow. Our long-term growth in expenses since about 2009 is about 2.4, 04%. So we have grown well below inflation over that time. Our short-term expense, expense growth is higher because we've had higher revenues recently. But still, this expense growth is just the last five years. Compare that to inflation, the last five years, 3.3% is very small expense growth. Same pattern in the long-term revenue growth, two and a quarter percent over something like 16 years. And then much higher revenue growth, almost 4% in recent, in just the last five years. So what we did is we shaved those numbers down. And this, this is just, you're gonna have to follow this along on the actual sheet. It's too small. But if you look at these numbers, you see that when we apply them, and there's many other things we did here. We did about, about a 1.75% growth in expenses every year. Next year, it's smaller, but this year we only had about a 0.4% growth in expenses. So I just doubled that for next year to be about 0.84, almost a percent, and then almost 2% in future years. Similarly, I had about a little less than 2% growth in revenues. So I'm projecting a larger than, a larger revenue growth in future years than expense growth. We have to do that. That is just basic financial policy. But you'll notice 1.9% growth in revenue is lower than we have experienced in the last five years and the last 16 years. A 1.75% increase in expenses is lower than we have seen in the last 16 years, the last five years. Several other adjustments using real numbers in the actual revenue sheet, which you can see all of our revenue is broken down in the next hard page there. But what it shows when we apply that, which again are conservative numbers, now we are looking at real growth, growing surpluses all the way, all the way into the 2030s. There are a number of policy choices we're gonna have to make along the way. Keep in mind, these are all projections. We still have, every single year, we will do months of policy and budget planning to build these budgets. There, we don't want to see levy growth. We, that means things will have to be cut. We may want to see more expense growth than that. That means we're gonna have to find more revenue. Okay, well, cruise to the end here. The only thing I wanted to show was that the terminal tax growth that you see helping to fund this is reflected in tonight's CIP. So we, a very modest, lower than what has actually happened in the last few years, growth in the terminal tax allows us to maintain the general fund healthy into the foreseeable future. Last slide before questions, since this is gonna come up, since I am mentioning a decrease in the levy, we have to make sure we all have the terms, and I don't want to patronize anybody. I know that everybody understands this, but a lot of folks may watch this and I hope this is helpful for you as you go out. The levy, a levy, but the levy is the total amount of revenue we will collect from the people of Superior. This year's number, total with, with that service, a little over 12 and a half million in the levy. We will collect that. Then we have, but in order to figure out how, how much any individual homeowner is paid, we calculate a mill rate. That number, the mill rate, it's a, it's a decimal point number applied to your property value will generate the amount of taxes you owe to the city of Superior. As you know though, the tax bill that's going to come out will then add to our tax bill, the school district's tax bill, the county's tax bill, the Northwood tax bill. Sorry to say, counselors, the other three taxing entities are likely to increase their levy, which means the bottom line bill that you and all of your constituents are going to get could very well go up. We cannot control that. What we can control is how much we collect. And that amount through years of responsible public policy that you have invested in, our end is going down. We will not be part of that problem for homeowners. That is the budget presentation. My voice has only just started growing hoarse, so I will entertain any questions. But again, after this, I will invite you to make a motion to postpone to the next meeting. But are there any questions I can answer immediately?
Sorry. Any questions from the council? Counselor Anderson.
Who do we email or who do we talk to if we see a change needing to be made?
Me, but depending what it is, if you know the exact department, at this point, the budget book is 100% handled by my office. But some of these actual budget documents, if something's a true mistake, which I doubt we would find many of those, you could email the finance director, but copy me on all of that so we can track it upstairs.
Okay, it's not a huge thing, but.
Yeah, if it's just text, email, email us.
Counselor Sweeney.
I'm gonna talk about the legal fund we've set up for that. Do we have, we all understand, and I think you explained what the legal fund is for, for lawyers fees. That's what I got from it. But do we, have we written language to that, verbiage to that for future years to tell us what that, what can and cannot be taken from not only that fund, but I'm zeroing in on that fund right now. Do we just say legal fund and that, let that be interpreted by who must interpret it three years from today?
To a large extent, that policy already exists. So most of the legal fund or much of it is paying for regular liability expenses. If we incur any kind of low-level liabilities throughout the year, it pays those things, including a judgment. Large legal cases are going to involve council decisions. So it, to a certain extent, if we're sued, if we're hauled into court, well, we have to go defend that, you know. And so we are insured to cover that, but we have a deductible that we pay some, the first $75,000 we pay. I take that comes from that fund. So that is just automatic. That is our insurance policy. If there were a law, say something like a settlement or, well, yeah, a settlement. If we were just gonna make a deal with somebody rather than go to court, other than some, unless it was under $25,000, the council would have to approve each of those, no matter what it is. And I think we should keep that system only because any given settlement is gonna be so different from the last. So there's policy for how I can spend it now, but no policy for how the council can spend it for large dollar things, but I wouldn't recommend doing that.
I'm just, I'm thinking of guidance for future years, okay? It's pretty clear to me what your intent is for it, okay? But that doesn't mean that for five years, somebody may interpret that totally differently. Whether we, I mean, I think, I care about when we set aside money, earmarked money, be specific for what we're going to use it for and what we cannot use it for. So just some food for thought and we can talk about that later, but that came to mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Elm.
Thanks for the presentation, Mayor, and all your explanations so far. I guess the big question is, how do we land on the 1.55% levy decrease? I mean, you said that was one of the largest decreases we've had, but I guess, could you explain why?
Yeah, it's the amount of debt that fell off. So the levy, as you look at it, almost anybody that looks at our levy is gonna see a single number. But the truth of the levy is that it's two levies, an operational levy that can only ever be increased by the percentage in growth in net new construction in the city. More on that later if you have questions, but the, the other is the debt service levy. So when you take a bonding, we are allowed to put the amount of the debt service, so our, our annual payment towards paying that loan back, that could be added to the levy, how much we spend each year. So we collect 10 million, I was making this up, 10 million for the operations, but another 2 million to pay all of our debts. If we add to that debt, however much that payment goes up by, that levy payment goes up by. Since we've actually been decreasing our debt, the amount we collect from the citizens to pay it has also gone down. It wasn't a policy choice. Well, it's a policy choice to reduce our debt.
We also had an increase of, well, terminal tax into it. Like, can you give, explain the logic of why increase that to just to lower the levy?
That, that didn't impact, the levy would have gone down either way.
Correct, no.
Yeah, so whether we, whether we put terminal tax money in the general fund, the levy was going down because our debt is going down. That is, that is why that happened. So I didn't choose the number 1.55%. I chose in like 2020 or 22 or something like that to not put any more debt in the CIP and then you all agreed with me on that. So that's what led to the levy decrease. It was a decision several years ago that is paying off now. The terminal tax allowed us to spend more money in the general fund. That's what allows things like firefighter mental health, increased police officers, marketing positions, the extra expenses you're seeing, as well as staff wages. So it's the, the terminal tax increase helping cover inflation as well as new operations.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the council? Oh, excuse me, Counselor Fantasy.
Thanks. One of the, one of the questions I said, or I've got is with the, with the debt service falling off, you can, you can see that in the line item, the schedule of the debt transfer last year was 2683. Next year, or next year is projected 2410. So that's obviously the debt service falling off. But then in the CIP, we're bonding for $14 million. Obviously, that has a payment that's attached to it, but when you look at, I don't know when the first, when the first payment would be, would be due or projected to be due. But if, if we're bonding 14 million. But if, if we're bonding 14 million, it's going to, it's going to come due at some point. There isn't an increase in 26, 27, 28, or 29 for, for that bonding.
Yeah, there, uh, if I had another month or two, I could have made the expenses that detailed. So when we look at the projections, while the bottom line numbers, we, we put quite a bit more work into the revenue, than we did in the, uh, the detailed revenue than we did the, the detailed expenditures going forward. So for example, you're right, you, what you are noticing is correct, but you will find that problem exists throughout the, uh, throughout all of the expenditures in the general fund. So for example, it doesn't, you, you won't see an automatic wage increase in all of these either. Uh, the, the, what we had to do, because we can't predict any individual expenditure. I mean, yes, we could have sort of predicted that one out. We probably could have predicted a couple others out, but at some point that work was getting so intense to, uh, it was getting very voluminous with very little reward. So what we did is we rounded all of the expenses together, uh, and looked and compared it to how it's grown in the past. So for example, we have had major levy increases in some years and not in others, well into the past, going back the last decade and a half. And overall, it has ended up with that average, those average expense increases that have shown. So while yes, the levy is likely to go up, some other things are likely to go down, but we would expect overall about, uh, one and three quarters percentage increase. So it, it's just not reflected in the detailed numbers there. It's meant to be reflected in the bottom line numbers. We average everything out.
But, but, but it is, you know, with the, like, the wage increases are, are all factored into the future. I mean, you look at every, every line, every department, and there's, you know, the increase on every single one.
Yeah, it's the same number. So it's the number that I showed you before, that 1.75. It's actually like, so next year is an increase of .084. I think what you're going to find is if you apply that to every single number, it'd be the same increase for everything. And that's, that's never reflected in truth, but obviously I can't make a full, it takes months to make this general fund. I can't make that for every single year going into 2031. It's an average projection of all of those numbers. So it's, it's just applying a growth rate to every single number. It won't be true in every case, it's true across the board.
But if we're, but this isn't a normal, just on the average over the last 10 year increase. I mean, this is a $14 million bond that's going to have payments of a $14 million bond, but it's not allocated in the, the scheduled debt services.
Yeah, it's just 1.75%. It's, uh, but that's applied to all of the numbers. Again, it won't be true for all of those numbers. Probably 1.75% probably won't be true of any of them. It's true in the, in the average, in the aggregate to make, uh, these numbers look predictive. Uh, before we just, uh, I mean, we did the same thing before. It just wasn't rooted in our actual expenditures and revenue. Now it is. So, um, in other words, let's go backwards. So what you're saying, um, I showed you a slide at the end that said our expenses grew at, what, 2.04%. Well, the, the debt service went up and down, uh, but other, uh, the debt service would go up. Sometimes it would go down, other things would go up, sometimes it would go down. Across the board, the average was 2.4, 04%. That's all we do going forward is we apply, we apply an average that is now predictive and based in its, in our actual history, rather than just some arbitrary made up number. So we can't really know what that is. Now, we could probably sit down and figure out the actual debt service number, the same way we figured out the terminal tax transfer number. Still going to change in the future, uh, but while it is going to go up because we're adding debt, we're also dropping some off in, in future years. That's still not me saying it's going to be an exact 1.75% change each year. We could probably apply that, uh, but we would just need another week or two to keep doing that to each number. And then pretty soon you're banking the whole, uh, the whole general fund over. Well, it, it was a number chosen, applied to everything, which actually years ago was how the city planned its, its entire general fund budget. We didn't go into the line items and make individual choices. We just applied a 2% growth across the board because that's what people thought was inflation and put that in front of the council. So we could do that in the future. All I'm saying is to do that would be the same amount of work it was to bring you the 26 budget. But the, the number, how it's, how the bottom line number is growing tracks with how that bottom line number has grown through history. That's all that's meant to do.
And, and I, and I get what you're saying where, I mean, we've, we've got all kinds of different bonds that expire at different times and, and they're all different lengths and, you know, all of that. And so there, there is that, yeah, that, that up and down payment. But this isn't, this isn't just like a normal up and down, this is $14 million. And so if, if last year it was 2683 to pay our, our bonds payments, next year's 2410, maybe we won't have a, you know, a $14 million bond payment, probably not. The fire hall wouldn't be, wouldn't be done yet. But then the following year goes, it goes down again, knowing it's, we've got a $14 million bond. And so wouldn't it be more reflective? I, I get the averages and, you know, the ups and downs, but this is, we, we haven't bonded in what, four years at, at all? And so if, if we weren't bonding, I, I could, I could see, you know, just a little bit of up and down. But I, I don't see how we're going to pay like in, in 2027 when we're looking on, I know we're approving 2026 today, but when we're looking out at the projections and if there's, if there's going to be money left based on this, this budget, there's going to be, if, if this is a, a strong budget today for, for the future and we're not allocating for the additional payments for a $14 million bond, that, that surplus or that, or that shortfall rather, at the end in the future years is, is going to be much more significant than what it is now. So wouldn't it make more sense to at least somewhat accurately account for that $14 million in bonding payments that we're going to have in maybe 26 for sure, 27, 28 and moving forward?
Yeah, so the reason we apply a general percentage to it is because, yes, we can sit down and figure out exactly what scheduled debt service is likely to look at in, uh, in a vacuum, isolated from the rest of the budget and just change that number. But then why only change that number? Why wouldn't we then go look and, uh, look at police department spending and try and figure out exactly how that's going to grow each year? And then look at the fire department spending and exactly how that's going to grow each year. The reason we don't do that is because we'd be at this for another two or three months and.
I don't even think that's a, that's a fair comparison because that, that would be like, as if we were going to say, all right, in 2026, we're going to hire an additional 50 police officers. Uh, and, but we're not going to count for the, you know, the money that those are going to count because it, it all, it all averages out. If that, that $14 million is, is such a significant number. I, like, if you look at 2027, I don't see a scenario where we can pay our, our bond payments with the projected number of the 2306. And so I, I, I don't, I don't think we have to get necessarily in the, in the weeds and, you know, get, get down to the exact amount because the, even, even the $14 million bond is just a, is just a best guess. We don't have the, the numbers for the fire hall, we don't have the, certainly don't have the numbers for the irrigation system. So that, that, that's, that's a fluid number, but it's the, the fairly, you know, within 10, 15%, but I, I don't see how, like, when you're looking at the projection, how that's relative to throwing, uh, $14 million in bonding in 2026.
Uh, well, first, the $14 million is exact. That is the exact amount of bonding that we are proposing. The, uh, in fact, I think it's tonight. And the, uh, uh, remember, the reason I showed you not just five years, but 15 years, that 2% growth held across the 15 years and most of those budgets did contain bonding off usually much more than this. So throughout that entire period, our percentage growth was still, uh, still achieved an average rate. Now, of course, you're going to have some years. The number that you see at the bottom line is not reflective of what's actually going to happen. What I'm saying is a .84% growth in expenses next year is reasonable. Now, you're right in that there is likely to be an, an increase in debt service, which I will account for somewhere else. Something else is going to have to go, uh, or revenue is going to have to increase. If revenue goes up more than I'm budgeting here, then we're fine. Uh, if it's the same, we're probably still fine. Uh, the, uh, and if it, if there goes the other way, then we're, uh, potentially looking at reductions in something else. That's how budgets go. We can't predict all of that. All we can do is look at what's happened in the past. That is one number, and that can be fairly predictive. We can put that in there, but it doesn't account for how the budgets actually play out in real life. If you take one number that you know and adjust that and then leave the rest the same, it's, well, we would obviously correct for that. In this, it's similar to what I said to you last year. We're never going to allow deficits to occur in our general fund. We're going to make choices to account for that. But when we're planning several years into the future, you have to settle on a number that feels predictive. Because for all the ups and downs and all the different numbers, we have achieved an average growth in expenses of about 2%. We would expect that average growth to, uh, contin-, uh, to continue at about that rate for the coming years. That's what happened in the past, that's what's likely to happen in the future. All I'm saying is I'm not doing full budget planning for every single line item. I applied the average growth rate to the future years that we have experienced and then made it slightly more conservative. There's, it's, the future years are not line item budgets. So yes, you could, you could blow it out of the water, but what I'm going to do is then just go cut something else. I'm going to say, well, we should have a reduction somewhere else or increase revenues to their more accurate, uh, uh, projections. We just took what were honest, accurate projections and made them more conservative, and that's how we got there.
But if we're going to, to your term, blow it out of the water, wouldn't it be prudent to look at that and put a number on it now in 2026 instead of realizing in 2028 that we blew it out of the water and we never planned for it?
No, because we haven't even decided to put it on scheduled debt service. So bonding, I said earlier, bonding, we can levy for it, doesn't mean we have to. We haven't always done that. So in future years, if it's a large amount, and next year, uh, that will be a significant budget question, how much we actually levy for. Because I'm, I'm not going to want to stand in front of you with a massive increase in the levy either. So, uh, we have frequently, I have frequently proposed budgets that, uh, did not char-, uh, did not put the full cost of the debt service on the levy. So while that number might go up, uh, we can apply other funds to cover it. So it, it may not actually even go in there. So ju-, we, we don't just take what the actual full cost could be. Well, I'm sorry, the scheduled debt service is still going to pay for it. But all I'm saying is it could be, uh, covered in many other different ways. And as it goes up, I would account for it by cutting other things or increasing other revenue. All I'm saying is that work is more work than we do in the general fund presentation for the existing year. This is predictive in that it matches our previous average spending across the board. It, it's always going to involve policy choices that make it balance in the end.
Okay, because, because the, the previous spending, we didn't, we didn't bond $14 million. But I, I, my, my point that, I'll, I'll kind of, you know, wrap this up, but my, my point is I want to make sure that we're not ignoring the, the, the payments on a $14 million bond in the future while this year patting ourselves on the back for a 1.3% levy decrease.
Yeah, we're definitely not ignoring it. That is a cost that we will incur, that has always been part of it. And yes, we absolutely have bonded this much in previous budgets. Maybe not in one year, but, uh, CIP is frequently, in the past, we were bonding about 5 million every two years. And when we were doing that, 5 million was quite a bit more money than it is today. So this is a pretty consistent amount, we're just doing it in one shot. The other thing I would point out is while, uh, the other thing that's not accounted for here of the 14 million, 4 million is for the golf course, which we're planning to take revenue in from that as well. And that's not reflected in there either.
Yeah, that, that, that's fair. It's a small, small-ish percent of the 14 million, but, and also unknown, wildly unknown if, if there's going to be the revenue from the golf course to pay that, but, um.
No, it's there, it's just a decision whether to use it. And those are decisions for the future. The, again, this is not a, this is not a policy proposal, it is a projection based on our past behavior.
But if, if it was there, then we'd be able to do a revenue bond.
Well, we can't do a revenue bond for the whole thing, we can't sell it. I'm just saying we can, we can take the revenue to pay us back for some of it.
Okay. The other, um, question I had is, uh, when you look at pretty much every department, they're, they're all going up, you know, a little bit, which makes sense, you know, we've got, we've got the wage increase, you know, the, you know, all of that. Except for the, the police department, that's, it, it's slight, but it's going down. Is that because of the, it, it's going from 9435 to 90, 9424 next year? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking, the, I'm, the difference, uh, you want to, sorry, I was looking at, uh, 25 to 26. There's a projected slight decrease, so, never mind.
Okay.
It was, it's the, it, sorry, it's the fire that's going down from 24 to 25. And, uh, I, I just want to make sure that we're with, is it Act 12? The maintenance of effort clause to make sure that we're, we're staying in line with where we were last year.
Let me double, let me double check that number a little bit. Do you remember what that was?
Well, it does appear a little weird in the budget. It's because we had this very large shift of retiring fired, um, fires and we had a lot younger generation come in. So it's not that the amount changed, it's that they started much lower on the scale, much lower longevity. And that's, we're kind of seeing that trend happen actually in the police department currently, which is, you know, where we're trying to really work on that maintenance of effort and keeping our cost in personnel up, which is kind of a backwards thing from what we typically do in bu- budgeting. But we want to make sure we're meeting those maintenance of effort numbers. Otherwise, it is a significant decrease to the state shared revenue.
Yeah, it's a, it's a huge decrease in the, the shared revenue. So Director Ranner, in, in your opinion, or did we meet the, the maintenance of effort for, you know, with this budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, there's, there's other factors that go into it just besides dollar values. It's, you know, personnel counts go into it. Police and fire have two different standards they have to follow, or police have to meet two of the four criteria. Two, four, four, yep, two, sorry, two, four for fire department and the police have to meet one of three. So, I mean, there's, there's different ways we can meet those standards.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilor Elm.
Probably more of a lighter hearted question here, Jim. You know, as councilors, we always get requests for improving the streets, potholes replacing, just bad streets in general. The street improvements on our votes, uh, kind of change from year to year, but it's always like the top five, I think it's in sixth place this year. But, you know, what methodology, G, do you use? Like, right now, I, I see the street maintenance program is just stagnant into the future. Like, um, can you help paint that picture? Like, if each of us councilors voted for that number one, uh, like, how, how would have this changed? And how would have our, just for like the general public explaining that? Like, how, how come our streets don't improve faster? I know we compare to other municipalities, we have some great streets, and I think we do a great job. But like, can you help paint that picture? Like, what does that vote actually even mean if it's stagnant?
Well, it didn't go down, anyway.
Sure.
The, I had a much better answer for this a couple of years ago, but then Director Janigo learned his lesson and started outsmarting me. So what I looked at in years past was how much we budgeted and how much was actually spent in any given year, because this is a rollover fund. And the, uh, uh, I found that we were almost never spending as much as we actually budgeted, uh, which told me we were at pretty much max three. There's only so much work you can do in the season, there's only so many contractors you can hire, only so much material you can buy. So then I started reducing it and to, to keep pace with how much was actually being spent. Well, now it's all being spent. Uh, 1.4 million is being spent. So this year, I looked at it as, uh, I, well, I'm choosing to look at it as we're, we're kind of in the sweet spot for 2025, especially since we've done, this has been a very strange summer for me. For the first time ever, I've gotten complaints about that there's too much street construction, which is just not the life of a mayor. And the, so that tells me something, that's a lot of our large projects. In future years, this will merit more attention. Obviously, we need a number to be in there so that we show that we're going to be funding this in years to come. Uh, because the CIP is actual dollars, not like this long-term budget for the general fund where those are projected dollars. Those are actual dollars, uh, and actual projects will do. The, um, what I think I, uh, am going to do is request something like a, a broader street maintenance plan, which I'd be shocked if Director Janigo doesn't already have. He's, he's pretty outstanding at long-term planning for, uh, his projects. So, uh, and then I'll look at what those costs are, we'll apply some sort of inflationary measure. So I do think that could use a little bit more work in years to come, but I'm also confident that, that streets between general street maintenance and the other street projects we've been doing in recent years, it's, it's been among our highest funded, uh, infrastructure projects in the CIP. Millions and millions of dollars over the last few years. And that's all been in a race to get ready for the, and we're not even done as we get ready for the Blotnik Bridge. So, um, it is possible, that could even look at a little decrease when the Blotnik Bridge closes, but let's, let's look at it a little bit more carefully next year.
Thank you.
Councilor Sweeney?
Total revenue that you're showing, projected revenue for, are you, how solid is that number?
Uh, I think it's a bit more, I was gonna say it's more solid than expenses, but I don't know if that's true. Uh, there are some pretty big variables that can strike it. Um, terminal tax is always the one that makes everybody nervous. That has always trended up. Uh, sometimes it takes huge spikes. Um, sometimes it's little ones. Sometimes it takes a tiny little downturn. Most of our revenue has reliably tracked up. A couple of things uh give me a lot of encouragement. One, that long-term trend in the terminal tax shows very healthy growth. They have depreciation balanced by inflation and then uh that, and then every once in a while, they do a project to improve the terminal and the value shoots up. The other is shared revenue, and this is one, this is the biggest unknown we have in the budget. We have a new uh, uh, shared revenue formula. It is influenced, it it grows by the percentage growth in sales tax, which is, and it's the dollar amount, so it's the actual, like inflation does impact that. This year and last year, we were surprised shared revenue was higher than we thought it was gonna be. And so I would say it's solid enough in that it matches, it's actually much more conservative than we have actually realized in recent years and long-term. Uh, so I think the projection is responsible. But I, I mean, I hate to say it, I'm optimistic on it. Things have been going in the right direction.
Is it, is it true that the drug company, they made a settlement with one of the major drug companies, and that X amount of money is filtered to each state? As I understand, that the next two years, it's gonna be the chunk of the money come to the states, and then I would think to the cities, is that, is that figure in here? Or do you know what that number is?
That to mine, no, that is, that is not in here. That, uh, I've heard those rumors too, but not enough to budget it. I mean.
Is it substantial? Or is it?
Uh, probably not. Um, I mean, not enough to make huge differences in this type of budget. Now, it is reflected to some degree. There are some unknown, you know, transfers from other funds, kinds of things, miscellaneous revenue lines in here, because we always get unexpected hits like that.
My next question then would be, how much, I realize this is the revenue, but how much revenue uh or income comes and we reduce an expense by the amount? Is that substantial?
Can you say that question again?
Well, if we were to um have an expense of a thousand dollars and we received, uh, somebody paid for a part of that, okay, would we reduce, is there, is it sizable or we reduce the expense by 200 because we received some revenue to cover that?
Yes, we do. In fact, that's uh one of the things I I think our finance director duh uh has really improved our uh budget systems.
Right.
Because that is, that is much more str- uh clearly reflected than in, than in years past.
So I, last year, we're work, so we're continually working on that, right?
Yes.
To make it more reflect, okay, thank you.
Any other questions at the moment for Mayor Payne here in the 2026 budget presentation? All right, um, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Finacy, can't see the color red, sorry.
Um, just uh, just a question, moving on to the the CIP, with um Tower Avenue being funded in 2026, 700,000, and then next year, 2 million, isn't that the state's responsibility for Tower Avenue? Bet it is, but they bailed on us. The uh, um, yes, they, and they will. This is not the state project. Um, basically, uh, our project got pushed out to after bridge closure and uh they, and I didn't think uh it could wait that long. So what we did is, we did sort of a pilot experimental project further south on Tower where we did concrete replacing, uh, called it the dentist method, where if there's major damage, uh, carved out the whole section and replaced the whole concrete. That's why you can see paneling. So the Tower Avenue project you're seeing, there'll be more work next year where the major sections of concrete come out, and then the whole thing gets ground down, so it creates a smooth surface. That's designed so that the street is stable, the the damage is repaired, and then uh it it gets us through bridge closure, and then the state does a whole new project six, seven years from now.
So the, the 700,000 next year and then the 2 million?
It's all one project.
Just maintenance, just kind of Band-Aid?
No, it's a, it's a pretty substantial re- repair. It's just not a full dig out and replace. So it, it does, in fact, it's, it splits the difference between a um huge, like a a mill and overlay and a full replacement, which we've never done. Uh, in fact, the real pilot program for that was 20, uh, 21st Street, and you're district councillor, where they uh, they they dug up whole sections and replaced the concrete and the worst of it, cuz many sections of the street are fine. And so they did a partial full replacement. They fully replaced the worst sections, and then you, then you grind over and smooth the whole thing. So it actually looks like a brand-new street and acts like a brand-new street and and buys you several years. It, it was a, I thought, a pretty impressive innovation. I, I can't remember if Director Janigo or Nathan Johnson get the credit for that, but one of them thought of it, and it worked really well on those other streets.
Cuz alternatively, we would just have to wait seven, eight, nine years for the state
unacceptable. It was, yeah, it cannot go that long.
Okay, yeah. Um, and then the, and and it probably doesn't even make a difference, but normally the the bus services, that's paid out of the general fund, right?
Mm-hmm.
And in here, it's allocated, I mean, n- next year, but it's allocated in uh in 2027. And I guess it probably doesn't make much of, much of a difference, because otherwise it would just be a shift in the terminal tax over to the general fund and, you know, I upset that. But it um, the, my my only caution with that would be where it's only funded for, for one year, I would hate to see us get in a position where we, you know, we we expand the bus route, and then the following year, we're like, ah, we gotta, we gotta pull it back.
It, it's not, no, i- it, that is not the purpose of that. I don't know what we're funding, or how we're funding it, or for how long. It could be a temporary during the bridge change. I, I don't know what the policy or the change is, or how much it costs. What I wanted to do was put a pot of money, I'd set it aside so that we could do something if the opportunity came up, and we didn't have to wait for next year's budget process. You are correct, if we make a long-term change, it will have to be reflected in the long-term transfer. This would allow us to do that in the short term and until we get to the next budget cycle.
Sure, that that makes sense. And then uh, the the last more, more just a comment, but I like the um, the the small amount that you put in leadlines. I didn't even think about like the, like the, like the one-off here, the one-off there that we might be able to um, you know, do at, you know, a cost-effective route. That's, that, the biggest reason that I didn't even rank leadlines is because all of 2026, when we're ranking for 2026, it's all um, 100% federally funded. And um, but I, I do, um, I do like that, that pocket of money just for, you know, some of those that if if we're tearing up a street, it makes sense to, you know, do it anyways, so.
And it will roll over if we don't spend it.
Uh, right.
Any other comments, questions?
Madam President, if I could just close by expressing a sincere thank you to uh the many staff that put this together. Uh, the, uh, my chief staff, Becky Baker, is not uh here, but she did a lot of the work on uh the, most of the work on the budget book itself, helping to prepare this presentation, the rest of the books she will be working on. The finance team, uh, I know you don't get to see the work that they do on this. You see the product of it, but their, their work has uh dramatically improved. They started strong, but Nick Reinhardt, Renee Hoff do outstanding work on this. Uh, the department heads will, will uh agree with me. The meetings have been shorter because the finance department is preparing better preliminary budgets than they ever have. They've done just outstanding work, and uh, they, they give, the, part of the reason the meetings are as tense as I described they were is because they give me very difficult advice to hear, and they stick to their guns. Uh, uh, most of the time. Uh, so they do an outstanding job, and the department heads were uh, uh, great in uh, especially in what they proposed, and uh, in their honesty and candor as we built these budgets. So as much, as proud as I am of this work, it, it really was a team of several dozen people.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, not seeing any more mics on. We're still on 6.2. What is the pleasure of the council at this time? You did hear a suggestion from the mayor to postpone, but.
Motion postponed.
Okay, uh, motion from Herrick to postpone, second by Elm, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Great.
Item 6.3 is a request to approve a resolution setting a public hearing for 6:30 PM on November 4th, 2025 pertaining to the proposed 2026 general fund budget and subsequent amendments.
Uh, motion by Elm, second by Liddine, any discussions on 6.3? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 7.1 is the business of the Human Resources Committee with a meeting held on September 22nd. Is there a report from the chair?
Yes, thank you. Um, we have four items tonight for approval. Uh, the first one is to prove, uh, the mayor alluded to a 2.8 uh wage increase for the non-union employees. Uh, approve the job description for the historic uh proposal for the museum director. And number three, the historic program museum director position, open that. And the last item open for approval tonight is to the Shared Service Agreement of Douglas County for the office, uh, the mayor's office or the third floor. So we have another few items that I, I just think we should tell you what we're doing, at least some things that didn't come up for vote tonight, but let me just tell you, we uh, we're still talking with um, the Historical Society trying to work on them. They've come through to request some money, and so we're working with them. They'll generally, maybe next meeting, they will come to us and uh we will be able to work with them. So we have no, I'm looking forward to working with them. I think they've got some things going, some great things happening, and so I give them credit for that. We have some job approval for light equipment operator, some of those things. And um, request for the historical properties museum director, okay? We want, we wanna get that hired. And I, I think the last thing probably is um, some, I'm trying to remember who came to us and wanted the, a certain job description change, or the, the um, the management job, and I think it was the Project Superior or Connect Superior. So we voted to uh cha-change their title. It, the title that, and it escapes me where it is right now, but the title was not, uh, did not depict what, what her or his title should be, so we voted to change that. So I will pass it back to the clerk. If she could pass those four items and mention them, then we can vote on them individually, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you wanted to approve these individually, or as a group?
I'm sorry.
You wanted to approve the recommendations of the committee individually?
Yes, we do rec- the committee's recommended all.
So is your, is your motion to approve them all, to approve them all?
All four of them, yes.
Okay. So, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion's by Councilor Sweeney, second by Councilor Grasky. And councillors, by the way, the reason I like to do that, Robert Schurls prefers the chair of a committee to recommend all of the recommendation, to move all the recommendations, and we can always divide them if you choose. Councilor Herrick?
Yeah, I need to accuse myself from 7.1.1. So if you wanna take that one separately from the other three?
We will divide item 7.1.1, which is to approve the recommendation for 2.8% wage increase for non-union employees. Uh, we will take that now. Counselor Sweeney, did you have more to say?
No.
Okay, is there a discussion on item, on item 7.1.1? Counselor Liddy?
Couple of questions here, Chair. Um, one, um, my first one is, um, is there an insurance premium increase on employees for 2026?
Shoot. Uh, Director Janigo, I remember us talking about that, but I can't remember how that checked out.
I do not believe so.
Uh, Chair, Chairman Sweeney said that he didn't think so. I didn't think so either.
I believe there's not an increase for this year.
Director Janigo, please.
Yeah, I think that it still requires approval from the finance committee and the city council, but it is going to be recommended. There's no increase.
And I, I bring this up cuz um, I, I hate to see an, an increase, and then we see a 10, 10% increase in premiums, and we've only raised wages by 2, 2.8%, and so those type of things. Are we, oh, um, I guess, sure, or, um, because of course, you hear the federal upheaval over health insurance right now, possible spikes. Do we worry that this trickles to the state and municipal employees that come November 1st, it may be a recommendation?
I don't, I, I, it's not something that's costing us a lot of sleep. Keep in mind, our, uh, we're self-insured, and so it's all paid out of the health insurance fund. And Director Reinhardt and I were both nervous about proposing a 0% increase to that fund, but it's healthy. It's, it's a healthy fund. We can pay our bills uh, uh, next year. Now, granted, things can happen. You can have an extreme increase in costs, which I hope won't happen. The other big variable is just you get a couple catastrophic cases, uh, uh, serious illness, um, pregnancy. Some of these things cost a lot of money, but you can't predict it. And all, all we can really tell you is that the fund is healthy, and uh, we we didn't take big expected hits. Uh, I think we just agreed to take the win. And it, it, if we get those big catastrophes, it's actually a pain for next year. We'll have to adjust it next year. But the nu- the numbers we have and the advice we're getting is 0%. Never had it two years in a row, so we almost felt like, take the win while we have it.
Gotcha, gotcha. Do we have an idea on what a 2.8% wage increase is for the overall budget, um, for all the employees? Well, what is the total amount?
Director Reinhardt, do you remember the number?
Uh, half a million dollars, 350. It's, it's somewhere, it's a couple hundred thousand.
Okay, just one, thank you.
Further discussion on the wage increase. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those, those opposed say no. The motion carries, and the record will reflect Counselor Herrick's abstention. The balance of the items of the Human Resources Committee are the remaining three items, which are also moved and seconded, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.3 is the business of the Finance Committee with a meeting held on September 25th. Is there a report from the chair?
Thank you. Uh, we have one item that needs to be voted on tonight, and it is the funding for the Humane Society. It's been recommended by the Finance Committee that we uh approve a $5,000 grant to the Humane Society for next year. So um, we must vote on that. Some other items that uh, uh, we just talked about, the, the village, uh, we're gonna, the Superior Village and the City of Superior have a contract with the fire department. We're gonna work on that and starting January. So that's coming up for the following year. City Superior, uh, we had our audit, and I think that was in our, uh, book chief, the, the audit, and I, I think the Finance Director may wanna talk about the auditor, but he was very pleased with him. You wanna just say a word about your, your audit, the firm that we had and how things went, and I think you were pleased, but you, I have to say it yourself.
Oh, yeah, happy to talk briefly about it. Um, our auditors, Baker Tilly, they're out of Eau Claire. Um, all they do is municipal audits, they do nothing else. So they're, they're pretty impressive to work with. Um, as always, it was, uh, this year was a little bit more tricky. We were a little behind on some stuff, but they really helped kick me in the rear and get us going in the right direction for the year. But I'm always happy with them. They always give great advice and always do a really good job with the audits.
Thank you. Another item we talked about, our uh, uh, reserve analysis and our, our debt compliance analysis that the Finance Director gave to us, and so, and like I alluded to before, we're working with the Douglas County Historical Society. Perhaps next month, we can get something going there. So I'll turn it over to the clerk so she can bring up the, for the uh, animal shelter. Thank you.
That's item 7.3.1 is to approve the Humane Society of Douglas County grant in the amount of $5,000.
Motion by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Moffett, is a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.5 is the business of the Public Safety Committee with a meeting held on September 18th. Is there a report from the chair?
Yes, uh, for the September 18th Public Safety Meeting, uh, the police and fire gave updates. Police reported that two probationary officers are close to solo duty. Uh, traffic stops are up 40% year-to-date, while false alarms are down nearly 20%. Shoplifting calls dropped 42% compared to last year, uh, with overall incidences are being up about 5%, mostly related to the proactive traffic work. The department also reviewed protocols for the ongoing uh, Corinne Johnson missing person case. Uh, the Fire Department uh then reported with uh, over 8,200 training hours this year with a focus on high agile and confined space rescue. The Fire Department's new software system, First Do, for records and operations management, is gonna be going live here November 1st, and Community Connect is now open for residents to share their safety. And Community Connect is now open for residents to share their safety information. Prescribed burn is planned here for early October, weather permitting. Public AED kiosks are being installed for about $6,000 each. And new fire engine here should be arriving in November. Under Old Business Committee approved a parking exemption on East First Street near 5030 Avenue East. That's one of the recommendations here. I'll be making an amendment here for further clarification. But for New Business, we renewed the Pathways to Hope Grant Program. There's about $146,000. That's for treatment access, sober living, transportation and peer services. The core team highlighted reduced overdoses, strong Narcan distribution and continuing outreach including our therapy dog, Millie. We also updated traffic control at North 18th and Ogden, creating a three-way stop. Finally, the committee approved auctioning the Old Willard Police Boat and transferring a 2020 Lake Assault Boat to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. This keeps local access while moving the storage and maintenance costs over. So my recommendation is to approve 7.5.1, but I do have an amendment. If the clerk would like to read that off.
Item 7.5.1 is to approve an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 112, Traffic Code Schedule I, Streets Excluded from Calendar Parking, to add 53rd Avenue East at East First.
The motion is by Counselor Elmer, is there a second? The second by Counselor Anderson, Counselor Elm?
And the amendment I'd like to make is right at the end, is to add North to the Alley. This is a recommendation from our Public Works Director Todd Janigo. So it would read at the end, to add 53rd Avenue East at East First Street, North to the Alley. And that's my amendment.
Okay, the clerk has the amendment. Does everybody understand the amendment? Is there a second to the amendment? The motion is by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Anderson, to amend. Discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. The question is on the passage of the ordinance as amended, is there further discussion? Counselor Elm, anything further?
Nope.
All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.1.1 is the business of the Communications and Information Technology Committee with a meeting held on September 29th. Is there a report from the Chair?
Sorry, Counselor, I turned your mic off.
That's okay, I'm still here though. At the CIT Committee Meeting, we went straight to the updated wholesale broadband agreement with Norvato. This is going to be, if approved tonight, the city's third ISP on the network. So the big change is the clear allowance for the overtop offerings from their company such as video and voice. This is going to ride over the same internet tiers that currently exist. It won't reconfigure the network. ISPs can use their own gear to deliver those services within the speed profiles that the city has set up. The core terms, duration, pricing framework, bandwidth tiers are going to remain aligned with prior ISP agreements. Though Norvato suggested to review the commercial pricing tier in the future, the committee voted to recommend Norvato in this agreement here to counsel tonight. Under recurring business, broadband manager Stephanie Becken had reported a strong first season with X Superior signups. One intentional full system downtime was planned for work, otherwise we've had some excellent uptime, so great work on that. We're at 73 residents that are lit, 21 in deployment, in tenant and paperwork stages. This is topping over 100 customers and there's also been 586 interest surveys in the systems for those who are interested in the network. North End is really close, that's Phase 1.5. The railroad crossing is the remaining piece there. We may consider opening some drops ahead of splicing to beat the freeze, but we need to have clear messaging how those activations would go if we do that. Jailing can run into the fall and resume as early as March 2026. We're planning out those budget scenarios with the survey-demand logical backbones have already been placed while staff at Public Works, engineering partners and ISP align on those recommendations. There's going to be an ISP roundtable that will capture some lessons learned along the way. And also customer billing feedback has been positive. Residents continue to ask, when can I get it? And I think that's a good sign of momentum. That's my update and the recommendation here.
The motion then is to recommend the business of the Communications and Information Technology Committee by Counselor Elm. The recommendation is of course to approve wholesale broadband agreement with Norvato Incorporated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is by Counselor Ludwig, discussion? Counselor Fennessy?
Just a, just a point of clarification. In the, in the meeting minutes, under this, this topic for Norvato, one of the bullet points, it says that Connect Superior Systems will not charge at all. But then in the contract, there's the, the same fee that is for, for everyone, the, whatever it's Exhibit C where it's whatever. So I wonder if someone could just explain what that, what that means? The Connect Superior Systems will not charge at all?
Manager Becken, please.
I'm wondering if that's a typo, if it's a change?
Okay.
Like, can you show me? I just want to make sure that I'm answering exactly the right question for you.
Yeah, it's, it's in the, in the meeting, the meeting minutes from September 29th, under the updated wholesale broadband service agreement, there's like five bullet points just to kind of recapture the conversation.
Sure.
The third one just says Connect Superior Systems will not, oh, that does say change.
Change at all.
That does say change.
Sweet.
Never mind.
Same page.
Yep. All right, thanks.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
All right, moving on to reports without recommendations at this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made?
Hearing none, we can move to new business. Yeah, I was just getting late. The clerk reminds me that I should mention the Board of Review. She largely runs that board with us. It is advised then by our assessor. It was, it's obviously been a very big year after our revaluation last year, so I just wanted to give counselors an update. I think we've cleared out, most of the folks that we've heard from or pretty much all of them. Last fall and, and winter, everybody that reached out to my office, I offered a meeting with the assessor where we talked about their valuation, their assessment, we went over their tax bills. And we kept a record of all of those people with their contact information, so an open book. When, when the assessor opened the books this fall, to give the public a chance to challenge their assessments directly to the assessor, we reached out to all those people, again invited them to come and, and what they should bring with them. The assessor had a number of people attend that. He made a number of adjustments. I don't believe he's here, so I won't summarize it more than that. And then we only had three folks attend the Board of Review, two of which were pretty large companies. Walmart asked for a waiver so they could present a case and the CHS Grain Elevator asked for an adjustment down, which they received from the Board of Review. And then I think we had one resident ask for a change, ask for an appeal to the assessor's decision, I believe it was granted correctly.
The assessor agreed to change it.
Okay. So the reason I bring it up is because it's been held, but if you've got any of these complaints like, hey, my tax bill went up quite a bit and I, and I don't know why or I don't think it's fair, that's the important one. Reach out, we have a whole process where everybody gets, can have time with the assessor, they can have time with me. We can go over the bill, see why it changed, see if they're eligible, because counselors, some folks are. And no assessor's ever going to get this perfect and the public is part of that process. And even if the, as the revale fades into the past, we always have a legal obligation to assess people correctly. So if somebody's incorrect, any given year, you can bring it forward and we can make that adjustment. So if folks have questions about that, feel free to follow up afterwards with, with me or with our assessor or with our clerk. Unless there are questions now? Then we will proceed to new business.
That's item 10.1 is to approve miscellaneous licenses pending Department approvals.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick. Was there a second? Second by Counselor Fennessy. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries.
Item 10.2 is to approve an original Class B liquor and Class B beer license application for A&amp;T Jack's Bar Incorporated located at 1923 Tower Avenue for the license period beginning July 1st, 2025, pending Health and Police Department approvals.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Grasky. Is there discussion? Counselor Sweeney?
I just have a clarification. This goes from July 1st of this year to June 30th of next year.
All of our alcohol and tobacco licenses are set for a license period. The license won't be granted retroactively. So once their approvals come in, their license starts the day that we give it to them, but it's within this current license period.
Because there must be a license there now from the current owner.
From the, yeah, the current owner, so it looks like this is a new ownership of this establishment.
So there's not, we don't have a duplicate license, that's my, okay. You just, when the one gets canceled, the other one gets, oh, I got you.
Perfect.
So, okay. But it does not reflect in the verbiage in here. Okay, thank you.
And that's partially due to, we don't know the exact date and the exchange, yeah.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.3 is to approve an original cigarette, tobacco and electronic vaping retail license for A&amp;T Jack's Bar for the over the counter sales of cigarettes for the current license period pending Police Department approval.
Motion is by Counselor Grasky, second by Counselor Sweeney, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.4 is a resolution to set a public hearing for the Citizen Participation Plan.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Elm, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.4 is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025C of the City of Superior.
Director Reinhardt, please.
So I'm, I'm going to have, actually I'm going to introduce Peter Madell from Ellers. He's going to give a brief presentation on the bonding and then I'm willing to answer any questions beyond that.
Sorry, what was the name?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counselors. My name's Peter Madell. I'm a municipal advisor with Ellers Financial. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you. We're setting up the presentation right now, but go ahead and get started.
Okay. Should I share the presentation from?
Yes.
Yeah, from your screen, you're okay.
Got it, okay. Okay, I've prepared just a brief presentation, kind of pointing out some of the highlights of the upcoming bond issue. To give you a little bit of background, the city's planning to issue $7.8 million in general obligation promissory notes. And the proceeds are to fund Phase 1 of the fire station construction. The additional $2.2 million for, I guess, Phase 2 of the fire station construction will be issued in 2026. And the reason why we're splitting it up and issuing two issues is to preserve the bank qualified status of the notes, both in years 2025 and 2026. So the city can issue up to $10 million in tax-exempt bank qualified notes in each calendar year. And so far this year, the city's issued 2.2 million in state clean water loan, state clean, sorry, state clean water fund loans. So that's where you see we're netting out the difference with this issue to stay within that 10 million. And bank qualified, what does that mean? Essentially, banks are able to deduct the interest expense when they're purchasing these notes. So they're, in exchange for that, those tax benefits, they're willing to purchase the notes and the bonds at a lower rate. So we really want to utilize getting the lowest rates possible and to do that, we have to split up the issue both in 2025 and 2026. So here's preliminary debt service schedule. I want to point out a few things here. Here you have the estimated interest rates going down this column. These are double A market rates, but we always want to be conservative in our estimates, so we add in a half percentage or 50 basis points to our, to the interest rates. So really the market's a little bit more favorable with the rates that you see right there. This bond issue is structured over a term of 20 years, which is the statutory, the longest term you can go with general obligation debt. And with, with issuing in the securities market, typically you have something called a call date. So in exchange for investors knowing they're going to receive a certain fixed amount of return over a certain period of time, they won't, they don't let you call the bonds or refund the bonds until a certain point in the future. So the call date on these bonds will be eight years out, so the first, which will be 2033. So anything after that point, you can refund at, at a later point. So if interest rates drop in near 2033, you can refund the outstanding maturities at a lower rate. So again, the par amount or the total issue size for this issue will be $7.8 million. And then the cost of issuance and the tick or the true interest cost, we have for the issues at about 4.23. Again, we're being conservative, actual market rates are better than that. So here's the estimated levy, debt levy impact for this issue, and I'll kind of show you what this chart is showing. So these dark orange bars here, this is the city's existing debt, existing outstanding debt. And so as you see, as we progress in the future, it starts to, the debt starts to fall off a bit. These, this cream bar, this is the new 2025C issue, that's $7.8 million over 20 years. In 2025, the net debt levy here was about 2.8 million with an equalized debt mill rate of about a dollar three per thousand. In 2026, with the, with the new debt that we're, we're talking about right now, the 2025C, along with the existing debt, the estimated net debt levy will be about 3.15, 3.159 million, which translates to be about an equalized debt mill rate of a dollar 18 per thousand. And just to give you some perspective, in 2025, the total equalized mill rate was about 462. So the debt is a, is a fairly conservative amount in relation to the total equalized mill rate. I put this slide in here just to show the city has plenty of borrowing capacity. So Wisconsin statute limits the amount of general obligation debt you're able to issue at 5% of your total equalized value. So that means the total amount of general obligation capacity you have, you can't have more than $143 million in general obligation principal outstanding. So that gives you almost $110 million in available capacity. So again, plenty of future capacity to issue for general obligation debt. And here's the, the debt issuance timeline. Obviously today is the 7th and we're talking about the finance plan. And then the council will consider the adoption of the sale and issuance of the general obligation promissory notes. If you adopt that resolution, it kind of gives us the, the green light to move forward with the financing. So we'll prepare an offering document. And then about a week before we price, we'll send that offering document or prospectus out to investors and marketers. And then we'll sell these bonds competitively on November 4th, so we'll take bids. So, we'll take bids electronically in the morning and then the council will approve those bids later in the meeting that evening. And then proceeds will be available at close on November 18th. So, that's a real brief, detailed overview of the financing plan. If anybody has any questions, I can certainly answer those now.
That was much faster than Sean always used to do. Anything to add, Director Reinhardt?
We didn't lose Sean, by the way. He just was unavailable to do the meeting tonight and Peter was willing to step in for us, so.
First, before we go into questions and discussion, I wanted to point out, he mentioned the schedule. I know bonding is a significant decision, we talked a lot about it. To point out, the final sale is not tonight, this begins the process so that you are, you can see that lines up with the budget process. So, I know it's a late night and I don't want you feeling burdened like you're making a $10 million, $7.8 million decision tonight. That comes next month, so time to work on this. This allows us to begin the process. That said, I need a motion, a second to debate the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion is by Counselor Moffett, second by Counselor Elmer. Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. I know, I don't know if you have these, either you two gentlemen have it. With the city, we have a 3% general obligation debt that we set. So, what would the figures be for that? Do you have those?
Help me understand, Counselor Herrick, what is 3% of what? What was?
Well, 3%, I said Wisconsin municipalities may issue general obligation debt up to 5% of their equalized value, whereas the city has a 3%.
Yep.
So, I was just looking for figures where that would fall.
Yep, so the city imposes a stricter debt limit on itself of 3%. What that is off the top of my head, I don't exactly remember. There is 8.5 million. Oh, 85 million, thank you Shelley. Shelley had the numbers quicker than I did on that, but.
It's more common in committee than in council.
We do have, if you look at the last Finance Committee meeting, we do have actually our full debt compliance issuance in there. It didn't flow onto the council meeting because we ended up holding it in committee, but I absolutely encourage you all to look at there. You can see all our debt metrics and how we pass them per our ordinance.
Okay, then the other question, I thank you. The other question I have is in regards to the 2.2 million in-state clean water fund loans. Have we received those yet or is that, I mean, what's the payback for that particular loan?
Those loans are part of the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund Program, so most of those are forgivable loans. And they're all part of ESD, obviously, that's why you may not be as familiar with them, but they, they're still bonds. Just because they might get forgiven in the future doesn't mean they're not debt.
Right, right, okay.
More to add?
Yeah, so there are a couple of things on those. So, there's two pieces to that, there's kind of the forgiveness piece and there's actually the debt piece. So, we've currently drawn down most of the debt piece, they're kind of drawable loans, so as the project continues, we draw down on those. So, we get both those pieces at the same time. I believe that whole amount has been drawn down.
Okay, thank you.
And the full answer to Counselor Herrick's question, the 3%, Shelley was right, it's 85.8 million is 3%, that's our capacity under city policy, which leaves unused borrowing capacity of 57.9 million. Sound right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. 67% of our capacity remaining. Counselor Sweeney.
On this note, we're talking about this debt, why have we backloaded it so heavily in the last number of years? If we have the ability to pay it, why have we backloaded it so heavily in the last 10 years? Backloading, the heavier payments are in the last X amount of years.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Peter, do you have an answer for that as to why that's kind of structured that way?
Are you speaking with the 2025-C issue or just in general?
I think the graph you're looking at Counselor shows that it's amortized where we're, if we took out no new debt, obviously our highest amount of debt is this year and that amount gets smaller each year.
Typically, when we're structuring our debt issuances with L R, we go for a very, we try to keep a very level pay, yep, exactly.
Yeah, so the principal and interest payment over the 20-year term of this note is about the same every year.
The principal amount's going to change with what the interest is for those years.
Correct, yep. Principal will start off less and then get bigger and the interest, but it all balances out to be about the same net, same payment annually.
Did any of us get close to answering your question, Counselor?
No, he didn't answer it, but I'll check later with you. I have a problem with this, but thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Once again, the motion is on approval of the resolution authorizing issuance of the bond sale. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries.
Item 10.6 is to approve a fire management memorandum of understanding with the Nature Conservatory for Wildland Fire Management and Non-Fire Management Stewardship Activities.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor Grasky. Counselors in Old Slade, the Fire Chief is here. This is an incredible partnership and he did an outstanding job putting it together, so I just want to make sure we're saying thank you to him, but if you have questions, he is available to you. I have a question. When is the burn likely to take place?
Well, we were hoping to burn this week, but weather conditions on our window on Thursday, we're looking a little windy, so I think we'll be looking at weather window for next week if we can get a time.
Further discussion, questions or discussion? Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, I just want to say, you're not looking for people to come out there and watch this, is that correct? You want people to stay away or?
From the point, yes, but I think we'll have an opportunity at the bungee dock for folks to see, because they'll be able to look across the water. And we're going to be burning only with a west to south wind, which will push the smoke over Lake Superior, so it will allow folks at the dock there to get a good view without being in the smoke.
Okay, thank you. I only bring that up because people are curious, so they may wander out there, so. All right, thank you.
I have another quick question, kind of related to that. People have been asking me, "What are you burning?" If that's a loaded question, of course, if it's a large question, just, we're not burning everything.
No, so the idea is if, actually, the fire is probably not going to be super exciting because we're not going to see a whole lot of flame. We're going to be having a low creeping fire that's burning the duff for the understory. So, the goal is to not do damage to any of our large trees, we're simply burning out the understory that's underneath of those trees.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the MOU please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries. No public comment, any further business for the council? If not, we are adjourned. Good evening, Counselors.